Good evening, everybody. This is the Carver Zoning Board of Appeals meeting in Room 1. It is June 22, 2021, and we are just about at 7:00 PM. Thanks for Area 58, our friends at Area 58, for recording us this evening. We have a number of cases, a docket that's a little bit longer than usual for us lately. But first, I want to address the issue of approval of minutes. These minutes are from our recent meeting of May 4, and I want to ask each of the board members if they've had an opportunity, first of if they've received the copy of these minutes, and if they've had a chance to review them.
They did? Yes.
I see everybody indicating in the affirmative. Does anybody have any changes they'd like to make, any amendments or modifications? Not hearing any indication that changes or modifications are being requested. I ask for a motion.
Second.
This is a motion to approve the minutes as written. These are the minutes of May 4, 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So that vote is unanimous, and these minutes of May 4 are now approved. Thankfully, that's our only administrative matter this evening, which allows us to move directly to our agenda. And the first case on the agenda is Case 41-6C. The petitioner being M.O. Lyons Realty LLC, which is requesting dimensional variances pursuant to Sections 2320 and 5222 of the Carver zoning bylaw for property located at 129 Center Street in Carver. That's located at Assessor's Map 41, Lot 6C, so as to construct a single-family dwelling with driveway and utilities on an existing lot in the residential agricultural district. Variances are being requested due to the need for side setback and lot size relief, which also has an electrical easement and right-of-way located thereon. So this is our first case of the evening, and I observed someone has moved to the table to address us. Who are you, sir?
Good evening. This is Scott Finara with Grady Consulting.
And I take it that you are here on behalf of the petitioner this evening?
Yep, that is correct.
Is the petitioner in the room?
No. I do believe he is coming.
The petitioner is M.O. Lyons Realty LLC. Is that right?
That's correct. So we're seeking some dimensional relief here. This is a lot that was created back in 1970. And the unique thing about this lot is there is both a right-of-way and utility easement across the property. And then up towards the north, there's a wetland area. And the wetland area is the main reason that we're here tonight. We're seeking a setback to the side property line from 30 feet to 20 feet. And the main intention of that is to increase the separation to the wetland resource area. We want to provide a natural undisturbed buffer between the developed portion of the lot and the natural resource area. So the utility easement prohibits any type of structures or utilities, so we're able to cite all of those outside of the easement. Our access will still be off of Center Street. The other dimensional requirements we'll still be able to maintain. We have brought this project to the Conservation Commission, so one of the reasons we're here tonight is mainly on their request. And again, it's in an effort to increase that setback to the BVW.
Who is the current property owner?
I don't know that offhand.
I appear in your application that it appears to be C. Lyons, C. period Lyons, at rebuildx.com. Is this somebody associated with RebuildX?
The applicant is M.O. Lyons Realty, which is on behalf of Chris Lyons.
And how is RebuildX involved in this? Because it appears as if C. Lyons is somehow associated with RebuildX.
I believe he works there, but this is a project independent of that company.
And who is Adam O'Connor?
So Adam is actually the property owner. M.O. Lyons Realty is in discussions to purchase the property.
Is there a signed P&amp;S?
I do not believe there is. I think it's largely contingent on getting approvals from both the zoning board and from the Conservation Commission.
Okay. So let me just sort of set the scenario for you. The zoning board of appeals, since it's being asked by the petitioner in this case to grant variances, must abide by state law, and most especially Chapter 40A of the Massachusetts General Laws. Under Chapter 40A, for a local zoning board of appeals to grant a variance or variances, plural, the petitioner must demonstrate to that board whether there is something unusual and different from the district generally in which the subject property is located, something different about the soil, the topography, or the shape of the lot. So at the beginning of our discussion about this tonight, I'd like for you to try to address for us, what is so different about the soil, the topography, or shape of this lot that would allow us cover to grant the variances per the requirements under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40A?
Sure. So the main shape of the lots in this area, as you can see, they're mostly rectangular. Most of the abutting properties are very similar in shape. What's unique about this lot is the proximity of the utility easement. Utility easement, it goes at an angle, and it covers a significant portion of this particular lot, in which case the buildable area on this lot is significantly reduced, as well as the proximity of the wetlands to the north. The wetland lines change over time, as we all know, and this wetland line has crept over onto the property, so much so that it's made it challenging to provide an adequate buffer to protect the wetland resource area.
I get all of that, but what about this lot is different in terms of its elevation, if any, to other lots in the same district? Is elevation an issue here, or no?
No, elevation is not an issue here.
All right. Is shape an issue?
Shape is certainly an issue here, yes.
How is shape an issue here?
The shape is mainly an issue because of the angle that the utility easement is coming across.
That's the easement, though. That's not the shape of the lot. Can you just outline with your index finger perhaps the shape of the lot as it appears on that map?
Yes, the shape of the lot is everything that's shaded here. The shape of the lot is rectangular.
Right. So is there anything unusual about that shape that we need to be focused on or concerned about?
No, there is none.
Okay. And what about soil?
The soil here is not unusual.
Okay. So this presents us with a conundrum. We, or at least I understand, and I think everybody else does too, because we've already looked at your paperwork that gets distributed to us in advance. We don't talk about it in advance, but it gets distributed to us in advance. We have to comply with state law. And for us to break the local bylaws and grant variances from the local bylaws, we have to look to state law as to what reasons we can give to do that. They are soil, shape, topography. Now, I think I just heard you say that we don't have issues with topography or soil. We may have a disagreement about shape, but if we're looking at the lot based on its perimeter, it's perfectly rectangular. I understand that we have some easements in there that encumber the lot, but that doesn't really affect the shape, does it?
It affects the shape of the buildable area of the lot.
Right. But the lot itself appears to be perfectly rectangular.
That is correct.
And we have a lot of lots in Carver that are unusually shaped because they've been cut up by Cranberry interests over the years, so they're curly Q, and they have all different kinds of angles to them and so forth. And that's not a criticism, that's just an observation. I ask other board members for their comments about this.
When you say the lot was created in the 1970s or '70s, was this created on an approved subdivision plan? Or what do you mean by "created"? Do you have a copy of the deed?
I do have a copy of the deed, yeah.
Can I see it, please?
Sure.
It might take me a minute to find, sir. There's other questions in the meantime.
Well, that's my main one. If it's a lot that appeared on an approved subdivision plan that's never been, you know, built on, that sometimes grants it a little leeway because the shape of the lot is half the size of what current zoning requires. But if it's Lot 3 on Plan Book 9, Page 12, then that's kind of a different story.
It appears as if you'd need two variances in this case. You need the side lot variance, and you need a lot size variance, as Ms. Clark just observed, and she's right. This lot that we're all talking about now is roughly half the size of what is required ordinarily in the town of Carver. So it's an undersized lot.
It meets frontage at 150, but it's half the size. Now, if I saw the, I mean, if it was part of, you know, the two or three small houses that go down the street from there, going north on Center, if it's part of that, then the deed will tell me so.
Okay.
If it's a meets and bounds description, then that's another story altogether. If anyone else has any other questions, that's my first one, my big one.
You guys are doing fine.
What was that?
Mr. Bula?
Ma'am.
Mr. Poreer. I'm listening.
And do you have a copy of the easement and right-of-way by any chance?
So this here is the original subdivision plan.
Oh, okay.
I don't think I have an extra copy of the easement, but I can certainly get that over to you.
Okay. And do you have a copy of this? I mean, can we keep this?
I'll have to send you a copy.
I can get one tomorrow.
Sure.
It's my job. And did you have a copy of the deed?
I can get that over to you tomorrow.
I can get that, too. You guys want to see this?
Thank you. So what we've been given is an approved, approval-not-required subdivision from 1970, stamped, as being received at the Plymouth County Register of Deeds in November of that year.
Okay. The question after that becomes if an A&R plan that meets zoning requirements in 1970...
It's grandfathered in.
If it is.
So this is the full title, sir. This copy here on top is the public deed. And again, I get your copy, so that's mine, too.
I can get it. No, I have access to that on desktop, so I can do that.
You want me to pass that over tomorrow?
This, but this isn't the current owner's deed, right? Because that description is all four of those pieces, and that wouldn't be the same as being a lot on a subdivision plan. It has to have been parceled out. Okay, this is going to take some looking at.
I wish I could answer your question more directly, but this did take quite a bit of research with our professional answering.
Yeah, I'm a professional title examiner, so I know what I'm looking for, and this might not be it, but that doesn't mean it doesn't exist. So I took some notes, and you can have that back.
So we're looking for what additional pieces?
It was tax title property, apparently, so...
So what is it that you're looking for? I need to write this down.
The description on the deed that he gave me is for all...
All of the lots.
Without referencing them as separated.
Right. So we need, what, the current deed?
I need to see the current deed, which I can get.
And what else do you need?
I need to check my book on a few things because... The question is whether we can accept that this is an approved lot on an approved subdivision plan. It helps if it's already been deeded out, and that on the deed it said also being shown as lots 1 through 4. Can I see the plan wherever it went? Oh, there it is. If it indicated that it was lots 1, 2, 3, and 4, but an A&R plan means that it met zoning at the time, approval not required, so that, I'm assuming that these other lots were built on, and this one got left because, probably because of the easement?
So there are other structures? Those other three lots have buildings on them?
That is correct.
They do.
Okay.
So you need a current deed for this piece, and you need to find out, or we need to find out whether this is an approved lot on an approved subdivision plan?
Yep. You can give that back to us in a moment.
So I think I'm hearing Ms. Clark say at this point that she needs time to obtain more information concerning this. And so I, at this point, will entertain a motion to continue this case to our next meeting so that we can do our due diligence and see if there is some legal support for granting the variances that are requested here. And again, there are two that you will need in order to do this project. One, you need side lot variance, because you're short on one of the sides. And more importantly, at least in my mind, this lot is only half, roughly half the size of what is required in the town of Carver to build on. So these are, especially that one, is a very significant variance. It's thousands of feet that you're going to need, almost 30,000.
And Mr. Chairman, if I can just interject, the reason that we'd be looking at this is that in the past, we have granted these kinds of variances or a special permit, but it's been on a lot, on an approved subdivision plan that meets the qualifications that it's been deeded out, it was just never built on, or it was someplace that was removing a structure, a mobile home that had been hooked up to septic, or a small, you know, utilized residential structure, and they're rebuilding in the same lot. We haven't had a whole lot where they're just blank, so I just need to be sure. It would be to your advantage if we can prove out the plan, the A&R plan, because then it becomes just kind of a different approach to this.
Okay.
Just again, so that you and everybody else understands, we get that this property is encumbered by electrical easement and a right-of-way, but those items don't affect shape, right? It affects the lot and what can be built on it, but it doesn't affect the shape of the lot. And this is what we need to be focused on per state law. So we don't have any discretion as to these three categories of things that would allow us to break the local bylaw. Again, they are soil, topography, and shape. It's got to meet one or more of those things. Doesn't have to be more, it can be just one, but it's got to meet one. I don't, from where I sit, I don't see shape right now. I see encumbrances, but that's different, as I just explained, than shape.
Okay.
In my opinion.
If it's easier, it sounds like we're moving towards a continuance here. I can certainly provide the title research that our land severer has done that helps paint a better picture.
I can do that tomorrow.
I should tell you, and it's very kind of you to offer, this is a Blue Ribbon title searcher sitting to my left. She's been doing it for a long time and probably knows more about real estate law than anybody here, including yours truly. So having said that, I ask for a motion to continue this case.
I'll make that motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, before you leave, we have to agree on a new date, and we want to make sure that it's okay with your schedule, too. So if everybody could pull out their respective schedules, and we will see if we can get a date in the next 30 days or so. This will not need to be republished, and no one will be given notice in that fashion. Your notice is tonight for those who are here, also from the website, the Town of Carver website, and calling the planning department also. They'll be able to give you a date, but we're not required to do another legal publication of what the next date is. So July dates.
Is there anyone from the public here on this one? Should we see if there's anyone from the public who is here on this one?
Yep.
While we...
In a minute.
Look.
While we are looking, does anyone want to speak to this particular application? Any member of the public?
I am out of town the week of the 19th in July.
So am I.
No, this works out.
What did you say?
He is...
And Eric.
Yeah.
We're away that week.
So we want to talk about maybe towards...
The 27th, the 29th, 28th?
27th, 28th, 29th. What days of the week are those?
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Are those okay for you, 27th, 28th, 29th?
Yes.
Let's nail this down. Which day of the week do we prefer, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
I prefer Tuesday because my RDA meetings are Thursday.
All right. So is July 27th okay with everybody?
Yep.
Yes.
So we've already voted on a motion to continue. Let's augment that motion by including the date of July 27 for this case to come back up before us, and we will have all the data that we need at that point to render a fair and impartial and unbiased decision in compliance with the law.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So July 27th.
Same time, 7:00 PM.
Yeah.
Yep.
It may be in here, or it could be in Room 4, which is downstairs.
Okay.
Sometimes we get bumped up, and sometimes we go down.
Of course.
So thank you for appearing tonight and being patient with us through this process.
Yeah, thank you for your time.
You bet.
Thank you.
Our next case this evening, the petitioner is Patrick Simon. Patrick, are you with us? Come sit down. Patrick Simon is requesting a special permit pursuant to Sections 2245(c), 5221, and 5300, and sections following of the Carver zoning bylaw for property located at 136 High Street in Carver. That's at Assessor's Map 31, Lot 9-2-R. So as to construct a 30-by-40-foot, square foot detached storage barn, the proposed barn is 1,200 square feet at 30 by 40. The maximum allowed is 700 square feet by bylaw, and all of this in a residential agricultural district. So Patrick, if you could speak to us a little bit about what you'd like to do and why you'd like to do it.
All right. So basically, I have a lot of motorcycles, tractors, trucks.
T-O-Y-S.
Yes. So toys, yeah. I have a lot of toys, and basically, it comes down to security, and I want everything in one building. Like, right now, I have just like all those silly Shelter Logic tarp sheds, you know, that just put them up real quick. There's no security with that. I want everything in one building. The reason I got to go above the 700 square feet is, you know, that's basically a two-car garage. I'll fill that up very quickly. The 1,200 square feet seems to be, I have another friend who lives in Carver who has one, and it seems to be the size that I need. And so where the location of it, I have all the bylaws that are required except for the size. It's oversized. My setbacks are all set. It's not on top of my septic. The reason I have it in the back portion of my property is for security. You can't see it. I have woods behind me and on either side, so my neighbors can't see it. You can't see it when you go by on the street. It'll be hidden, which is exactly what I'm going for. And obviously, I wouldn't put it in the front of the house. I have my well in my driveway right over on that side, and if I put it on the other side, I won't have my setbacks. So mainly, it comes down to, it'll be hidden in my backyard, and...
Is it, are you building it yourself, or is it one of these pre...
Contracted. It's a steel barn.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, contractors put it in.
And how tall? How tall?
I think the peak is 16 feet.
And is there any, is the back of your property, is it flat, or is there a change in elevation?
So the back, my property is basically flat. Behind me is a big section of woods, and then Route 44.
And what's the, do you have any idea what the height of your house is at its highest point, roughly? I'm not...
It's roughly 16 feet, probably. It's just a raised ranch, yeah.
And you said the barn will be the same height? Is that...
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have a picture of what you're going to put up?
I have the certified blueprint.
Okay. And how would you access it? I don't see like a driveway going to it from the street, or is this just for your, this is for your back? You're going to just put stuff in it?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So it's got like the oversized bay door?
It's got a bay door and one lock door, and two windows up tall, so someone can't just look in and see how many.
And right now, they're just scattered in these small, like Quantit hut kind of things, or...
Yeah. It's just basically tarp sheds.
How many do you have?
The tarp sheds, right now, it's three.
You have three sheds on your property?
But they're just like a tarp.
So you take these down?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And how many motorcycles, exactly, do you have?
Uh, let's see.
You want to see this, Steve? Wow.
I'm going to say...
He's mentally counting over here.
Ten.
Is your wife here? Does she know?
Yes.
Okay.
Ten.
Ten.
And we're going to park the cars in there, too, so I need, yeah... And we're gonna park the cars in there, too, so I need the extra room.
How many cars you got now?
There's two.
But you have lawn tractors, or...
Yes.
Is any part of that, part of your business, or is it just...
No, this is all personal.
Just keeping, yep, keeping your stuff together. And in the barn, will there be heating, water?
No water. I haven't decided on heating yet. Basically, storage.
And no second-floor storage?
No second floor.
So, this is just, kinda like, it's just like the Morton Building kind of thing?
It's a Morton Building, but different company.
So, this would clean up your property, right?
Yes, and I'm also trying to, not that I'm selling anytime soon, but it would obviously add value to my, to my property.
And are there chickens in the coop?
Yes.
Well, we don't want that torn down.
We've seen a lot of these.
We've seen, I think there's this...
Been a Barnathon.
It's been, it's very good. It's a Barnathon.
Well, you see on social media and friends, there's always people stealing everybody else's toys, and I don't want that happening to me.
Yeah.
So... And...
And exterior lighting, would you have?
No.
No?
No.
What kind of floor? Will it be poured concrete?
Yes. And I have woods, it's probably between sixty and eighty feet on either side of my property. Before, you can see, you can't even see my neighbor's houses in the summer. In the winter, you can just barely see them. Across the street from me is a make-piece property. It's all overgrown cranberry bogs. I believe it's like a hundred acres plus, so there's nothing there.
And Route forty-four is behind you?
Route forty-four is behind me, but there's a section of woods.
Would you have to take down trees, or...
No.
You don't even have to take down any trees for this space?
No.
No, wow.
Chofram?
I saw it. Mark White.
Let me show Mark.
I think I've seen one of these. Or three, or four. Oh, yeah. They're gonna need a ladder to see what's inside there, aren't they?
Yeah.
Thank you. Do we have... Okay, so, if you would allow me an opportunity to kind of recapitulate, Mr. Poirier inquired what the peak of the barn was gonna be. You say it's about sixteen feet, which is also the peak of the house.
Yes.
This would replace three tarp sheds, which are currently on the property, storing as many as ten motorcycles and two cars.
Yes.
No water?
No water.
Undecided on heat?
Undecided.
No second floor?
No second floor.
It's a Morton-style building?
Yes.
The floor will be poured concrete?
Yes.
There will be woods, or there is woods, or are woods on either side?
Surrounding it, yes.
And no outside lighting?
No outside lighting.
Okay, so when it gets dark out, he's gonna come home to you, because he won't be able to see what he's doing in there. Does anyone else have any questions? Does anyone have any concerns about the size of this barn and whether it should be perhaps downsized? I don't hear any concerns.
I mean...
The reason I decided with the...
We've seen so many of these.
The thirty-by-forty is, I have friends who have similar situations on their property, and they're always telling me, I wish I went bigger, I wish I went bigger. This, if I do this, I just have to do it once. I don't have to go bigger.
And truth be told, you could put up two conforming buildings for, and that would give you fourteen-hundred square feet. And you could probably fit two conforming buildings on your lot, one in the front and one in the back. And we take that in mind, too, whether you're gonna have two buildings versus one larger one. And we truly are seeing bigger barns coming through. In fact, I was discussing today whether we should maybe look at the bylaw again at some I just think guys have more toys.
I have a few of my own that might end up...
Okay. It's good to know.
Will it be visible from the road?
Barely.
Barely?
Yes.
Your, the house will probably block?
Ninety percent of it.
Okay.
Yes.
That's a hundred and sixty-seven feet off the street.
That's, oh, that's true, yeah. I can't even see that far with the glasses, so...
Nope.
Okay, does anyone have anything else?
I mean, normally, I think that we might have to do a sidewalk, but, and that he says he doesn't have to take down any trees. That's usually one of the reasons we do a sidewalk, is to see what trees are being cut, and how much is being cut, and if they should leave some buffer. But you're saying you don't even need to take down any, so... And it seems pretty flat, if I'm reading the topography right.
And it's way off the road.
It's way off the road. I'm good.
Give me a minute here to... Do you have anything else, Ms. Mello?
No.
Nothing? Mr. Mueller?
Good.
Ms. Clark?
I'm good.
Mr. Poirier? He's answered all of my questions. Okay. And mine, too. So, do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Is there any...
Do you have to ask the audience?
Yeah, I will in a second. Do I hear anybody from the audience wanting to make a comment about this? Okay, no. Mr. Poirier, you wanted a second with this motion?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so this public hearing is closed, and now we go to a vote. And unlike the previous case, if you're listening, this is not a request for variance. This is a request for a special permit. So, the rules are different and less restrictive on us. The first thing that we need to do as a board is to make the following findings. So, I'm gonna read off this language, and then somebody can make a motion in a second. We can vote on it. The board finds that the benefits of the proposed use outweigh its detrimental impact on the town and the neighborhood in view of the particular characteristics of the site and of the proposal in relation to that site. Do I hear a motion to make that finding?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, we have made that finding, and now we need to vote on the following, that a special permit may be granted under Article five, Section fifty-three thirty of the bylaws as the benefits of the proposed use outweigh its detrimental impacts on the town and the neighborhood, again, in view of the particular characteristics of the site and of the proposal in relation to that site. It's basically the same finding that we just made. We're making this now in the form of our decision, and this will be to allow the oversized barn construction to occur. Motion to approve the issuance of the special permit based upon the plan as submitted.
Make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, conditions. Obviously, we want to condition this on the plan of record, right? Which we have, which you've provided to us. Thank you for that. Do we have any other conditions that we want to attach to this grant of the special permit?
No interior water.
What's everyone's thought about that? No interior water?
You're okay.
I'm okay with that.
What, no interior water?
No, if he has water, gotta wash these things. I mean...
What we've done previously is outside spigots.
Yeah. But he didn't ask for...
You're not asking for water, are you?
No.
No, he's not putting in a bathroom, are you?
No.
Nope.
If you guys are okay, I'll...
I'm, I mean, it's, with the Morton Buildings, and this is why I'm okay with it, the Morton style buildings, they're not really conducive to the residential kind of adjustments or uses that we see with the stick-built ones. And those are the ones, residential uses in these oversized buildings, outbuildings, is what we try to keep an eye on. And that's with watching out for water, watching out for plumbing, watching out for a bathroom. There's a shower, there's a kitchen, there's a tenant. So, that's the point of this discussion.
Okay.
I'm good.
So, we have voted unanimously to grant your special permit under the authority given to the board under the Carver zoning bylaw, Sections fifty-two twenty-one and fifty-three hundred, and sections following, based upon your testimony and your submissions this evening. Congratulations. This is all subject to the plan of record, so you're not gonna be able to deviate from that plan and say, okay, well, you know, I've changed my mind, I wanna do this instead of that. So, you're gonna be held to the plan as filed with this board. Do we have any other business in regard to this?
I should tell him the process.
Yes.
What will happen now is that the decision of the board will be filed in the office of the town clerk within the next several days, or by the first of next week. That starts a twenty-day appeal period, so everyone on your butters list will receive a copy of the decision. If they choose to challenge the decision and appeal the decision, that's within a twenty-day window. After the twenty-day window expires, then the town clerk will call you, or I suggest you check with her, and she'll give you a copy, the certified copy of the original decision. It has to be recorded at the Registry of Deeds, which I think the fee is about a hundred dollars now. When you bring, you'll get a copy of it, or they'll even give you back the original, but when you bring that recorded copy with the recording information, then you get a building permit.
Okay.
So, we're gonna file it with the town clerk, check in with the town clerk in about three weeks, and if she doesn't call you, just double-check with her. She's got a lot on her plate. You'll take the recorded copy with you, or the original copy with you, down to the Registry of Deeds on Overy Street, down near the Plymouth Farm, and they'll walk you through the recording process. If you've never done it, it's really easy.
Okay.
So, they'll give you the original back right then, take that to the building department, apply for your building permit, unless they let you apply while you're waiting thirty days out. So, that's the process from here.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, the next case on our list is case thirty-one-nine-two-R. And the petitioner is Matthew Marios, Marios, Maro, how do you say it?
Maroway.
What?
Maroway.
Maroway?
Yeah.
Okay. And this is a petition that Mr. Maroway has filed, seeking a special permit pursuant to Sections twenty-two forty-five C, fifty-two twenty-one, and fifty-three hundred, and sections following of the Carver zoning bylaw. This is gonna sound awfully familiar.
Yeah.
For property located at...
I wish I'd gone before him.
For property located at forty-eight South Meadow Road in Carver, which is at Assessor's Map one zero four Lot eight dash E dash R, so as to construct a thirty-by-fifty-square-foot detached storage barn. The proposed barn is fifteen-hundred square feet, the maximum allowed is seven-hundred, with an enclosed ten-foot porch on the left and ten-foot enclosed porch on the right side of the storage barn, all in a residential agricultural district.
One porch is open. The one side's enclosed, the other is open. It's ample enclosed.
Well, it was advertised as enclosed on both sides, but if it's only gonna be enclosed on one side, which side would that be as you look at it from the road?
That would be the left side.
Left side enclosed.
Yeah.
Okay, so, if you could tell us a little bit about what you wanna do and why you wanna do it?
Sure.
Again, this is a request for a special permit, not a variance.
Yeah, so, my wife and I, we are redoing a house later, and we had the property, I've always kinda wanted a barn. We have a shed that's kinda falling apart right now, that we wanna get rid of. We have no space in the house where I can kinda set up a workshop, do anything like that. I actually build lamps out of black iron. I work for a plumbing company, heating and air conditioning. So, we knew we wanted to do this, and we needed a bunch of space, because my in-laws passed away last year, my mother passed away the day before. We have a lot of stuff from both houses, and we need a lot of storage space, and then I need room to work and kind of get out of the house a little. So, we, basically, we just, we took all the measurements and saw what we could do, and everything I had heard is people, almost like Simon just said, where guys have put up barns, and they regret it because they run out of space real quick. So, this was kinda the size we settled on, and kinda drew it up with the company, and we tried to make it, it's another barn that really can't be seen on the road, but we wanted to make it look as good as possible, too. You'd be able to see probably the front of it as you drive by, maybe, but it's still set back way from there. I think it's another hundred and twenty-five feet from where our house is, and our house is about a hundred feet back.
Now, before we get into the specifics, your application indicates that the sides, the ten-foot sides that we just talked about, you know, the right side is to be enclosed. And the way this reads it, it abuses it, the left side is too. So, are we talking left, or right, or both?
Um...
You wanna come look at the plan and just...
Yeah, actually, I'm sorry, I'll hang over here, but...
It's all right.
I have the site plan underneath.
So, that would be on the, I'm sorry.
That one?
There we go. So, yeah, the opening would be on the left side, I'm sorry.
So, it's on, the open side is the left side?
Yes.
Okay, not the, I think you had that backwards initially.
And then the enclosed side?
Right side?
It's the right side, I'm sorry.
It's the right side.
All right, well, the first thing that we should advise you of is what you're wanting to do here is not fifteen-hundred square feet. It's considerably larger than that, because we have to count the enclosed side. If we count the enclosed side, kudos to Mr. Mueller, who's already ahead of me, as he usually is, the square footage bounces up to one thousand nine hundred and eighty-two point zero four square feet, just a tick under two thousand square feet for what you're trying to do. Now, before I turn this over to the other folks for questioning, can you tell me what the square footage of your house is?
I think it's, um, I think it's near 2,000. I think, I'm not 100% sure, probably a little, probably in the, the cape.
See if you have the assessor's card.
It's right here.
Do you have it?
Yep.
Can you tell me what the square footage is, so we don't have to guess at it?
Hold on. You know, your foundation sizes of your house?
38 by 24.
Can you do the math, Mr. Mueller?
That, that's the best I got, somebody else will have to...
And then add 15 for their front step. Do they count that? Is it a cape?
Yes.
So, double it.
So...
What do you have for the house, minus the steps?
1,800 minus, uh, plus the steps.
Okay, so this barn, garage, whatever you want to call it, is going to be larger than your house.
Uh, yes.
Okay, folks, fire away.
Is the enclosed side, is that completely enclosed on the interior as well? Is it a separate room?
Yeah, we were gonna, we were thinking of putting something up, because I'm going to have all my tools in there, um, and then the stuff from our shed now, lawnmowers, stuff like that. And then, the main room was going to be where I did the workshops, set all that up, and I might, you know, put my work truck in there, too, so...
But your what?
My work truck.
Your work truck?
Yeah.
Are these, these doors here on the front, are they like garage doors, or are they...
They slide, they, they slide open. They join the middle and slide open, yeah.
So, the side, the side that's enclosed, there'd be a wall inside, separating it from the main part of the, the building?
We think so, we, we think we'd do a petition there. You know, nothing like, you know, nothing, just basically like a small petition, you know, just to... I'm not sure if we enclose the entire way, we haven't, you know, we haven't gotten that far, but...
And the side that's open, what will you be using that for?
Uh, that's mostly for stuff we can leave outside, just keep out of the rain, you know, wood, firewood, you know, anything else we can put under there that, you know, we can just keep it out of the rain, it can still be outside, and not kind of taken away.
So, you don't have a, you don't have a garage with your house now?
No, no, we have a, um, we have a shed off the driveway that is original to the house, I believe.
And you don't plan a driveway going to the barn in the back?
Uh, not at the moment, no, our driveway goes right up to our house, and then you're talking, you know...
And this is 245 feet away from the street. You have kind of a big lot.
Yeah, we go back, uh, I think 900, 900 feet, I think it goes back, something like that.
970.
So, 245 feet from the street, and it's going to be, how many feet back from the rear of the house?
We are, I think originally we were thinking 125, but we might go 100, we might pull in a little closer, but...
No, it has to, if, if we choose to grant, it has to be subject to the plan that you've submitted.
Okay.
So, you can't move it up or down.
Oh, all right.
There's no, there's no wiggle room.
Yeah. You're locked into what you find.
You're locked into what's on this plan.
I got you. Which I believe, was that the 125 I think I put on that?
It's, well, the only distance we have is 245
Okay.
From the street to the closest corner of the building, which is how they measure it.
I got you.
Um, it looks, your house and deck look to be sitting right about in the middle.
Was that, I'm sorry, was that the surveyor, the surveillance, the guy?
Yeah.
Wubbies?
Yeah, yeah.
And you can see on the plan, he's got the 50-yard front set-back line in the houses, probably more than that, behind that. This is to scale, which I assume it is.
Are you going to have to take trees down?
Uh, we have taken some trees down, we are pretty much set with that. We don't want to plan on taking anything down now.
So, you won't need to take any down to set the building?
We shouldn't need to, um, if it's set where it's going to be, and like you said it's going to be. I think there's some dead ones that, uh, but, like, they're on my property, but, you know, there's some dead ones back there, there's probably five of them, I think, in the pine trees. We may have to, I mean, those may have to come down, we don't want to really take any more trees down. It's, it's been, uh, it's been a big job, but, um, there's just some dead ones that we think if, because we weren't sure how our property was until the surveyor came out, and unfortunately, well, not unfortunately for us, but our property kind of leans to the right. So, we, when we lined up the building, we thought where it was going to be, those trees were an issue. But now, since we have to be 30 feet off the other property line,
Yep.
and it's kind of turned a little, yeah, there's about, there's about five, I think, dead, dead pines that we, we think might have to come down.
But it will be the peak of this building, can you tell me that?
Uh, it's once, I think it's going to be about 16 feet also. The walls are 12 feet, and, um, it's probably peaks probably under four or five feet, I would think.
What about the peak of your house, if you know, if you know?
I would, I'm guessing it's about 20 feet, it's a two-story house, so... But probably close to 18, I would think, actually, because it's not a full, uh, you know, it's a cape, so the upstairs, the ceiling, you could stand up on it, but...
The floor, is that going to be poured concrete?
That will be a slab, yes, a four-inch slab.
You have neighbors?
We do, yeah. The neighbor on the left, uh, he has several barn buildings, he's... We have no issues with our neighbors at all, I mean, they're...
No, I, I guess I was just curious about, I mean, can you see, can you see your neighbors?
Uh...
Some places, the last guy who was in here said that with all the trees, you can't really see anything. Some places we've been to, when you can, you know...
Yeah, I mean, you can't, I mean, right now, obviously, in the spring and summer, you can't really see. In the winter, yeah, you know, there's some oak trees and stuff that, that, you know, the leaves fall down, it's a little more clearer. Our neighbor's on the other side, on the right, um, that's, that's all trees, it's all kind of woods. The house is set further up than, than ours, so...
So, you really can't see much of what's going on there, what's behind you?
Uh, behind us, it is all woods, and then to our right, it, it borders the, um, the high school baseball field.
Oh.
So, we border the high school, if you cut through the woods, the fields are right there.
Okay.
According to the plans, this is indicated as a two-story building. If you look on the first page of the plans, it says allowable height two stories, building code summary. Allowable height two stories. So, and it's also insulated. Are you going to have heat in there?
I am going to have heat in it, yeah, we'd like to make it year-round. Uh, we're not doing plumbing or anything like that in there, it'll be electrical and just heat. I mean, I'm going to put probably a mini-split or something like that in there.
Okay, so you plan on finishing the inside?
I plan on, yeah, insulating it, yeah.
Insulating, but sheet rocking?
Um, yeah, either sheet rock or, or pine board, something like that, I mean, it's, you know, we're not...
So, it's not going to be just studded walls where you walk in?
No, no.
Okay, it's going to be a finished building?
Inside, yeah, I mean, yeah, we'd like to, we'd like to heat it and actually make use of it year-round. I mean, I like, um, the work I'm, I'm trying to do in there, I like to do year-round. But we...
It says, uh, so on page one, on building code summary.
I missed that, okay, oh.
Under, let's see, 19, it says allowable height two stories. I'm sorry, under 11, it says building height 12 feet with an E, number of stories two. So, on this very first page, under 11.
Yeah, I don't know why it would say that, because it is a, um, it's not like a two-story building, I don't put a loft or anything in there, it's just a one, uh, one-room building, basically.
Did you tell the person who drafted this that you wanted to use upstairs as storage?
No, no, this was designed as a one, like you said...
There's a reason that's on there. I mean, they just didn't draw it that way unless they had instructions.
Yeah, it's got a 19 feet to a peak, great. The first interior petition was 12 feet four.
Um, no, I mean, we did the walls, like you said, we actually lowered the walls. The walls were higher, we went down to 12 feet, and I think it was, it would be, uh, ceiling height about 15, because we were doing, um, scissor trusses inside.
Maybe this plan needs to be redrawn.
So, talk to me. Okay, so there's, there's no second floor, all right.
But the garage peak now is 19 feet, based on the plan, Mr. Mueller?
Yes, 19 feet.
So, that's the same peak roughly as your house?
Yes, I would say that's probably the same. Like you said, I know it's two sto, the house is two stories, but...
You going to have outside lighting, or no?
Uh, we would have some lighting, yeah, especially...
Outside?
Yeah, on the front, we have some over the, the main door.
Would they be like motion lights?
Yeah, I think so, we don't, we don't really want to keep, you know, we don't need it on 24 hours, you know, overnight. But yeah, probably motion lights.
This one, I think I'd like to go out and see.
Given where this is sighted on the plan, if I were to drive by in my car and look at your house and try to see what was in the back, would I be able to observe this structure?
I think you'd be able to see the front of it, like the, uh, the doors, uh, maybe the front of the building. Since it will be kind of kitty-corner when you're driving, um, so if you're coming from the high school, you're not going to see much at all, because it's all, the trees are pretty full, and our house is there. When you're driving towards the high school, you'd probably see the front of the building if you actually looked down our driveway. But we, you know, we have trees lining our driveway all the way up. So, it's, it's not, unless you looked over and went, looked up our driveway as you drove by, you probably wouldn't see it.
Now, you're going to be using this again to make your lamps, is that right?
Yeah, um, well, that...
How many vehicles are you going to have in there?
Hmm?
How many vehicles are you going to have in there?
Um, I did my work truck, and my wife's car, if she wants it in, you know, we, we'd have the room to put my wife's car in there if we wanted, you know, if it was snowing or something like that.
So, two vehicles, plus your tools for the, and workstation for the making of the lamps?
Yeah, and everything that's, you know, in our shed currently, and everything that's kind of in my, clawing up my basement, my wife wants me to get out.
Shed coming down?
Hmm?
Shed coming down?
Yeah, yeah, we're taking that down.
How, um, for, for your uses, how important is the enclosed porch? Because that's adding 500 square feet to the, the size of the building, which now makes it almost three times the allowed size.
I got you. Um, I mean, it's not, it was just the way, you know, when we designed it, so, you know, and I talked to the builders, and we talked about what we were looking at, this was kind of the design we talked about, I mean, it's... I mean, if I can, you know, if, I'd like to have it if it's possible, but, you know, um...
And again, we come up with the conundrum about that he could have, if he built a second building, outbuilding, not attached to the garage, he could have 600 square feet all by itself, just sitting alone, um, as opposed to one building with the additional. So, this is, this is the, the, what we've been struggling with lately, is that he can have, by right, well, he'd have to have a special permit...
Because of the size of his property, he's got room...
Yeah, he's got room for that.
But we must make the decision on what is before us.
Exactly.
Not on what he might be able to do, which is not before us.
But I think that's a factor in that. The 500 square feet that he's attaching to the building that he's proposing, if we take that off, he can build a separate building that's conforming of 600 square feet somewhere else.
But he could have this building and another building, too.
Yeah.
How many buildings do you want?
Got room in the back. It's just, it's just part of what I, when we're mulling over these onslaught of oversized buildings that, outbuildings that we're seeing, that's, becomes part of our discussion, and, um, and that's why I wanted to know if the outside piece enclosed was a deal-breaker. Um, because we've, we've had enough before us lately that we've determined that if it's not enclosed, it does not, is not part of the square footage, because we consider an open building as basically a carport or a shed. So, that's what I wanted to know.
I think I heard somebody say, and I don't remember who it was now, that they wanted to go out and see this property, was that you, Ms. Mueller? And it is this, or it's custom, that when one of us believes that a site visit would be appropriate, we all go along for the ride. So, unless there's strong opposition otherwise, I would suggest that maybe this matter needs to be continued for a short period. We agree on a date to go and look at this, vis-à-vis your house and neighborhood. And then, we will reschedule this for our next meeting, which will be on July 27th. At that time, I think I can probably say with some degree of confidence that we'll be able to come to a vote. So, this is not going to be continuance after continuance after continuance. So, do I hear a motion to continue this public hearing to the date of July 27th?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Okay, and before we take a vote on this, I want to ask any member of the public who is still with us if they have any questions or comments, or if they'd like to be heard in some fashion with regard to this application. I don't see anybody indicating they want to speak, everybody's kind of quiet tonight. So, all in favor of continuing the case to July 27th?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and so, did we give that nice fellow who began our evening a time on, we didn't, uh...
We're not doing the site.
So, we need to give you a time?
And a date.
And a date, July 20-something, or sometime perhaps before. But we usually do these at 9:00 a.m.
Oh, okay.
And we usually do them on a Saturday.
Okay, so this will be a Saturday, then, the, the next meeting? I thought...
No, no, of site.
The site visit.
Oh, site, all right, yeah, that's...
Site visit on Saturday at 9:00 a.m., and we're going to give you a date now.
And what we usually ask, if you can stake out the general area and size and placement, um, at least the four corners, base, you know, as best you can on your plan.
Sure, sure, yeah, I, I think I have, um, three of them down, and one...
Oh, okay.
We have some, we have some other logs we had to move, I can put the other stick down. We have three out of the four, and the surveyor actually was out there when, and was helping me. We have three out of the four, and, um, the surveyor actually was out there when, and was helping me with it one evening.
Yep.
Uh, what date in July, folks?
Um, well, we have the tenth to seventeen, well, I.
The first weekend in July is the weekend of the fourth, I don't think that's a good.
And I'm out of town on the twenty-fourth. So the tenth to the seventeenth.
Tenth.
Tenth? Tenth?
Uh, one second here, the, uh, seventeenth would not be good, but, so it'd have to be the tenth for me.
Okay.
All right. So to repeat, we're going to come out and do a site visit on July tenth, you're going to stake out as best you can, which as I understand, is, it's pretty much done.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Uh, we will reconvene on July twenty-seventh, and most likely come to a vote, one way or the other. I would, uh, suggest, after listening to everybody and, and looking at the paperwork myself and studying it, that you think about whether you really need that enclosed portion or not. Because as Ms. Clark, the vice chair, points out, this adds five hundred more square feet, which would make it almost three times, as she says, what's allowable. Now, that's a big upgrade. So if you feel as if this is something that you really do need to have, uh, you will advise us accordingly on July twenty-seventh. If you feel as if you might want to change your plan a bit, rethink that, it's entirely up to you.
Okay.
I'm not making any judgments just yet, but, you know, you have to kind of read the questions and read the mood and, and make a judgment as to how you want to see it.
I understand, no problem.
Okay. So, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Do you have anything more for us before we move on?
Uh, no, I'm also, I'll see you July tenth.
July tenth.
Tenth and July twenty-seventh.
July tenth, twenty-seventh.
Yep.
I, I wanted to make a suggestion also, because we have this come up with another fire case. Contact the manufacturer and just get a cost quote again, I know you did that, I think it was almost two and a half months ago.
Yeah.
The other guy ran into an issue and it went up like thirty-five percent.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I'd actually just talked to him today, and, um, there was, there was no issue on that end.
What kind of, is this going to be a Morton-style building?
Uh, it's going to be a steel building, but it's actually an Amish company that, that puts it up.
Okay.
I think that's the second or third Amish steel building we've heard of down here.
So thanks for being patient while we waited through the first two cases.
No problem.
And, uh, we will look forward to seeing you on the tenth.
All right, I will see you there at nine AM.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'll probably be late, because I could actually just walk to this one.
All right. One more. This is case one-twenty-two-nine-one-five, the petitioner being Tim Ganey, requesting a special permit pursuant to, hold on to your chairs, section twenty-two forty-five C, fifty-two twenty-one and fifty-three hundred, and sections following of the Carver zoning bylaw for property located at twelve Mayflower Road in Carver, which is at Assessor's Map, one-twenty-two lot nine-one-five, so as to construct a nine-hundred-and-seventy-five-square-foot detached garage, the maximum allowed, as we all know now, repeatedly, is seven hundred square feet in a residential agricultural district. So this is the third of three consecutive barn cases or garage cases we've heard this evening, but the smallest of the three. So, let me pull out my papers here. This if I don't have it already. And, put it into this. So which one is Tim?
That's me.
And you are?
I'm Michael Fisk, Fisk Construction, on the contract, that's going to be.
Okay. So. Within all the required setbacks, is that right, Mr. Ganey?
Yes.
And the replacing with the mudroom and porches, it will not attach to the garage?
Correct.
So I guess I'll take you through some of our customary questions. You should be ready with your answers, huh?
I think first we need to know, how many toys do you have and where are you going to put them?
Uh, not many. I just have one old truck that I'm working on.
You have a, a design, you have your builder here, you have a design that we can see?
We don't have a full set of plans, we have a rough, I picture what it's going to look like.
All right, talk to us first about electricity. You're going to have, uh, electric inside?
Yes.
Will there be outside lighting?
Yes.
Kind of outside lighting.
Uh, just a couple of lights over the garage doors and one near the entry, the people entry door.
I'm sorry, can I interrupt for just one second? So I see on the page there from the building department, it says thirty by forty.
Oh, how cute.
But to construct a nine-hundred-and-seventy-five-square-foot.
It's a little bit of an L shape.
It's an L shape, if you look at the, at the drawing.
Oh, I got you, sorry, I'm visually.
That's all right.
Spelled here, so.
That's to kind of stay within the setbacks on that side.
Yep.
Square it off.
Are you going to have water inside, or no?
No.
And what's the, uh, what is the garage going to be made out of?
The conventional stick frame.
It's what?
Conventional stick frame.
Oh, thank you, I didn't have those. So this is what it's going to look like, huh?
Roughly, yes.
It's very stylish.
Thank you.
What kind of home do you have, does it match?
A cape, a cape-style home with a couple of dormers.
Okay.
What's the square footage of your house, please?
Uh, it's about sixteen hundred square feet.
And what's the purpose of the L, is it if you squared it off, you were going to need a side lot variance?
Yes, because the lot line kind of goes at an angle.
Yep.
What's the peak of the proposed construction?
It'd be, uh, sixteen feet.
Does it have a second floor?
No.
For storage, no? Is that why the little window is crossed out?
Yeah.
So no second floor?
Correct.
And what's the peak of your house?
Uh, it's a two-story cape, so it's. Yeah, twenty, twenty-two feet.
It'll be a little bit lower.
Correct.
The floor is going to be what, poured concrete?
Yes.
So it looks like this will be visible from Mayflower Road, is that true?
Yes.
I do have, uh, pictures of what the, uh, site looks like.
All right. Oh, okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Is it in front of it? It is in front of it, part of it.
Hmm, good picture.
That was going to be my comment.
We were just, uh, observing up here that part of this garage is going to be in front of the house. That requires relief, does it not?
If it's not attached.
What, what by law does it?
Hang on.
It's either going to be even with the house or in back of the house for it to be allowed by right, if it's.
Or your house has to be a hundred feet off the street, and I don't think it is.
Is that for attached or detached?
Detached.
Detached.
So if it's attached, it can.
Attached, it can come forward a little bit, but it's, because that changes like the, where the beginning line of the building line is.
Because see here, if he attaches it, he still doesn't have the thirty-foot setback for an attached structure, that's why.
Right, if you moved it back.
Yeah.
But I think there's a, I mean, that's a pretty severe angle, that's a pretty severe angle that it's, your lot line angles back.
I thought you had it placed kind of where it is, just because of the angle, he kind of can't put a conventional.
Right.
Shape in there.
You have no garage there now, right?
Correct.
Just some pictures.
Yes.
You can see what it looks, what the driveway looks like in the.
I know the locust shows eight feet. It was a setback from the street, correct? Use the street as the guideline?
Yeah, his closest corner is sixty-four.
So to use that as guidance, where it squares off, it's like twelve feet.
Okay.
Can you say that again?
So where that angle is?
Yeah.
I know on your locust plan, you square it off and you show it eight feet.
Yeah.
Of where it's turned, you're actually further in front of the house, based on the, using the street line.
Mm-hmm.
As your baseline.
So you're saying it's twelve feet in front of the house?
To the closest corner.
Oh, all right, because it's still in eight feet off the front of the house.
Right, if it was squared up of where it sits, it's actually close the distance.
All right.
So, what sort of footage relief do they need? Because the, that part of the garage would be in front of the house.
Twelve feet.
So, the front of the garage is in front of the house by twelve feet, is that right?
It's just using that roadway as a guideline?
Yep.
So then that distance is actually not as small, it's, it's, uh, fresh over right there, so it's roughly twelve feet.
It's twenty-two forty-five B, I finally found it.
Thank you. Well, I know it's in, I know it's in the front.
I know, you've moved on without me.
Twenty-two forty-five C, Ms. Clark.
B.
B, pardon me.
There it is.
How far, do you know how far off the road your house is?
I, off the top of my head, I do not.
It doesn't look like it's far.
It's not a hundred.
No.
So do we agree that he needs relief under twenty-two forty-five B?
Yes, but it doesn't need to be a variance, it can just be included.
Why do you say that?
Because we don't have measurements, and it doesn't really specify measurements, it doesn't really. Provides for the ten-foot.
What are you going to put in this garage?
Um, I, I have an old truck that I'm working on, and I'd like to have room to pack my, my truck and my wife's car if it snows or something in the wintertime.
If it snows?
Well, when it snows.
There's, um, there's six feet between the deck and the side of the garage, does that matter? Is there a minimum?
Is the, the rendering on the plan, is that going to be what's going to be there, or what's going to be replaced?
For the, the, right now, there's a twelve-by-twelve deck there, and we're going to be replacing it with a twelve-by-twelve mudroom.
So you're replacing it with a twelve-by-twelve mudroom?
Yep.
So the, the specs are the same?
Same exact size, yep.
Not before us, though, right?
No. And what's the distance between, so there's six feet between, I think that meets fire code.
Yeah.
It does, okay, thank you.
So, question now is twenty-two forty-five B.
Yeah, and I really think that the engineers should be giving us the survey distances. So I don't think we should guess at, well, this building's sixty-four, it says sixty-four point one, but there's also a two-foot jog in the front, which actually would reduce that to sixty-two point one from the road. And we really don't know how far back the existing building is. So we really don't know what relief is needed.
You're right.
So I really think that the surveyors need to give us those measurements.
So we're not sure whether they need twelve feet or something less or something more?
Right.
Yeah, because the little jog at the fifteen, where the fifteen feet's foot, oh, he said it's two feet.
Yep.
So does that make it sixty-two?
So really, the front of the building.
Right, but with the slant on the road.
Right.
Yeah.
It's got to be a unique situation, it's not like a cut-and-dry square.
Right, yeah, I mean, I kind of. It's hot engineered, so it's roughly twelve in front of us.
Roughly.
That's like a straight edge across, kind of comparing with the, the street line.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a reason why you decided on detached versus attached, is what?
Well, if it was attached, I'd need a, a variance, because I'd be closer to the thirty, I wouldn't have the thirty-feet setback on the side.
It's an easier variant.
You haven't been on the board that long, so.
Move it over.
The shape of the line, he's got.
You're picking up six feet, you're at twenty-three, twenty-three point seven versus thirty. We know that number.
But he actually has a pretty good shape argument because of the severe lot line.
Yeah, that's kind of the best...
This is not like the first case, which was a perfect rectangle. Were you here for that one? This shape is...
Yeah.
By no manner or means usual. Okay, this is an unusual shape.
Well, he's trying to conform it and sandwich it in to the... This unusually shaped lot. This angle, if it was squared off, it would be all the way over to here. And that would give him almost 40 feet on one side. So he could certainly attach the garage.
Then we wouldn't have that issue with the garage being in part in front of the house.
Nope.
But we would cause another issue, which would be lack of side lot.
Less lack of side.
Yes. Yes.
Right. But... I can see the shape argument of the lot... Being noteworthy.
What about neighbors to either side of you? Are those neighbors... Do you have woods or vegetation along those boundary lines on either side?
There's a fence on one, the opposite side where the garage is going to be.
On the side that they want to construct on?
There's about 10 feet of vegetation between the two houses.
Low vegetation?
Most of it is. There are some taller 20-foot pine trees also.
Well, I think what I'm hearing them say is that, based on this plan, we can't tell with certainty how many feet you would need to gain relief from bylaw 2245(b). It appears that you might need 12, but we're not sure. Is that right, folks?
Mm-hmm.
The suggestion has also been made that if you change this up, push it back, then you wouldn't have the 2245(b) issue as I just described. You would have now a side lot issue, which may qualify for a variance based upon the shape of your lot. Because if you recall, again, the discussion from the first case this evening, shape, soil, or topography. I don't think there's any issue with your soil. It makes your property different than the surrounding properties. And topography, the same, right?
Yes.
Nothing different there. So it would have to be a shape argument. And this shape is... It's not a regular shape. Let's put it that way. So you might have a good argument to have a variance if you decide to push it back. Or you can keep it where it is and provide us with greater detail on the dimensions that we need to see in order to consider granting you relief under 2245(b), which again requires that your structure not be placed ahead of your house, either even to or in back. That's what the bylaws require. And if it's in front, unless it meets very limited exceptions, you're going to need relief. So...
And the other...
That's only for it's detached, correct?
That's detached. And the other consideration is, since you do have a very unusually shaped lot, if you attached... And I don't know what construction cost would be to attach another six feet. But if you attach the mudroom to the garage, left it where it is, don't square it off because that's going to put you pretty too... Far too close. But left with the 17.7, that's an... That's an argument that can be made. So I think what you are hearing is that you can... What we need to decide on the petition in front of us right now is we need some more distances on your plan. So you need to contact your surveyor and tell him... Write this down. You need to satisfy 2245(b). It's one of the bylaws.
The distances from the street to each point on the front?
So we need the closest corner... We need the closest corner...
Nice catch.
Of the house, which is the left-hand side. So the closest corner of the house, straight to the street. And then that two-foot jog that you see, we actually need the distance of the jog where the door is because that's actually closer than the lot line that he gave us. I mean, when they shoot the line, it may be the same thing. And this one may have been an inch closer, and that's why he chose that because of the way the road slants curves around. But we would need that, too. Or in the alternative, you can attach it and come back with this unusually shaped lot for a variance.
We had attached it, we wouldn't have to come back for the variance.
If you attached it, you would because now, instead of being 30 feet, you're going to have 17.7.
So you'd need the variance on the sideline.
But you don't need it to go in front because now it's attached. Your building lot line just becomes different. But you have... You have a really severely angled lot. And I'm guessing that... I mean, there isn't a conforming side to put it on. And I'm guessing your septic or where your utilities come in is on the other side. So that's almost a soil condition, too, because we consider if you have your pipes coming in on one side of the house, you can't dig those up. I mean, it's... Or I'm not sure where your septic is, if it's in the back or in the front.
It's in the back.
It's in the back?
Yes.
Is your well in the front? Your well's in the front?
The well's in the back also.
In the back? Okay. But... But that's... I mean, that's even less on that side, way less.
So you have some choices?
So you have some choices.
Okay.
It's just for now, based on the plan submitted, we can't calculate what it is that you need if you keep it detached and in front of the house.
So you can leave it with that, but we need those dimensions. Or you can reconfigure the plan, redraw it, and then come back to us on the same contingency.
Okay.
Do you want to take a copy of this to give to what we're looking for? Or do you understand how that threshold works?
Yeah, well, I'll take that copy.
And these pictures, where do they come from?
They gave them to us.
Here.
It says... You know, basically squaring off the front of the house to the lot line.
Okay.
So that's your threshold. So we need that distance from there to where the front is.
Okay.
Right now, we're assuming it's 12 feet.
Okay.
But we need something exact.
And then continue to leave whatever it was.
27.
Do you have any questions for us? Any further questions?
No. Would I come back on the 27th with that?
We'll take a vote on that now. I just wanted to make sure that there was nothing more that either one of you wanted to go over with us.
See how it's squared off to the street? So that's your threshold. So that's... And then you measure from that line to the...
You're taking the shortest dimension from the existing house and running it pretty much parallel to the curve, I guess you call it.
Right.
And that'd be 12. And maybe even a little...
It might be a little less, might be a little bit more, but that's roughly what I give them.
So you pretty much want a measurement from each point back, exact.
At that front point of the existing house?
Yep.
To the street?
Yep.
Squared off, that's kind of through that line?
Yep.
So that's...
I see what you mean now if you're drawing that parallel to the street.
I mean, the house is also oddly placed. It's...
The house is placed to the car...
You have a curved line, a slanty lot, you know, a pie... Almost a pie-shaped lot. And then the house is put at an angle. I'm surprised the planning department didn't pick up on that bylaw because then we would have... You would have had those questions answered before you got here tonight.
I did ask them, and I got a totally different answer.
You what?
I did ask them.
And?
I got a different answer.
You got a different answer?
I thought they said that we had to go here, come here, no matter what.
Well, you had to come here.
Yeah.
But you would have... If they mentioned 2245(b) to you...
Yeah.
Then you would have had those dimensions already on the plan for us. And we could have made it... Probably made a decision tonight.
I think it's because the new commissioner is not familiar. My doctor...
It's his job to be familiar. Okay.
All right. So let's take a motion to continue this case to July 27th, which is our next meeting date. Second.
Second.
Any member of the public want to be heard? All in favor to continuing this to July 27th?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we'll see you back on July 27th. You know that right now we have three cases.
Yeah.
One that we've decided tonight. The other three had to go over for various reasons, which is not at all unusual. You should not understand that by needing to have this case continued, we're indicating one way or the other our feelings about this. It doesn't necessarily mean we're negative. It just means that we need more decision... More detail, rather. Okay?
That's just fine.
It's frustrating, I know, because you get held back a month, but...
Yeah, you're...
I'm fairly confident that if you come back with a properly drawn plan or changed plan based upon the alternative that was given to you tonight, we'll be in a position at that point most likely to vote on the 27th. Okay?
At 7:00.
It was nice to see you both.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. The next thing on the agenda is correspondence. Any correspondence we need to go over? I can't say that I've received any. Have you?
I have not.
I do that all the time. Don't worry about it.
So no correspondence? Does anybody have any new business that they feel as if they want to address? Mr. Poirier, I have new business with you. Make sure you bring your glasses the next time. Eric, save me. Do we have you, what?
RW Bryant signs.
Aren't you on the pla... You're with the planning board. You're downstairs.
That's downstairs.
You're in the wrong one. Oh, I'm so sorry.
Well, it was very interesting, isn't it?
They're down in meeting room four.
All the way down.
All the way to the basement.
Oh, no.
No, no.
I did that at the airport.
Huh?
Sat at the wrong gate.
So if we have no further business to address this evening, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So, second. So moved, second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Good evening, Carver. Thank you for tuning in.